Comments, but I also wanted to address some of the things that were brought up during the hearing. So I hope that, you know, I can go through these briefly and at least give you a chance to consider them. So first of all, I do want to thank the developer. They did reach out, them and their staff. Dan, Susan, Jennifer, and Barbara spent a wimpy evening listening to the neighbors. So I do appreciate that. I know that two days after the planning commission, they did take down the weeds. So I appreciate that, even though the residents have been complaining about that for a long, long time prior to them owning it also, and that they have dealt with immediate concerns of the neighbors. So I do appreciate that. But that being said, I do still have some concerns. The big concern I have is the January letter that was attached to the city council staff report. And it is attached to this staff report. It's attachment nine and it's attachment four within attachment nine. So that letter is from D.R. Horton, and it basically is clarifying some discussions and agreements. However, it is proposing to modify conditions of approval. Item one is proposing to modify condition 29 of 31620. Number two is conditions number 24 through 30. Item six is condition number 57. And item seven is condition number 38. I'd like to point out that any modifications of conditions require a notice public hearing to the surrounding property owners to come back before the original hearing body. And two of the commissioners participated in the past. Chairman Overmeyer and Commissioner Liverson for the Rick Robada tract 35393 right across from Solara. They were proposing to modify six conditions. They were removing eight lots and adding a park. They were actually making conditions to make it a better project. We had to notice based on direction from the city attorney. Deanna wrote the staff report. She clearly calls that out. And you had a packed room full of Solara residents. I'm sure you remember. So I'm just, I'm concerned that we're changing conditions and we're not going through the right process. If this does become an issue, it becomes an issue for the developer who indemnifies the city. On the scenic highway stepback, there have been exhaustive discussions. And so one of the clarifying points is tract 25168, which was all the properties. The developed, the undeveloped was reviewed and approved in the county. 25168, all the existing lots were recorded in the county and approved with those conditions. Tract 31620 was approved in the city of Hemet when it was annexed. So none of the lots have been built in 31620, which has that condition about the scenic highway stepback. So I don't think anything was missed. There hasn't been any occupancies issued for 31620. So based on the calculations that I came up with, the fair share would be 85.6% for D.R. Horton, and then the balance to the 27 lots. Or if you didn't even include the six lots in 25168, because Hemet doesn't have any conditions for those, they're county conditions. It would bring it down to like 82%. So I just am concerned about improvements being done and not being equitable, or them installing a sidewalk that then has to be ripped out. So if we're talking about equitable distribution, I think that we really need to look at everything. You know, the bus shelter, ripping off the sidewalk, putting it back in. I just, I want to make sure it's equitable. And like I said, I'm trying to think of solutions to get this moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Kendrick.
I'm concerned about the two-story homes that back up to the models. Also, lots seven through 10 do back up to Florida, so they don't meet the three, no more than three, two stories in a row. Also, the condition of approval, condition number 23 of 31620 and condition number 23 of this site development review says it's a parkway that's curb adjacent. So both the underlying map and the conditions of approval that staff's presenting tonight are talking about a monolithic sidewalk. They're saying it's a parkway that's curb adjacent. So I wanted to bring that up. I'm concerned-
The two minutes are well up, and I realize that you're the spokesperson for a lot of people, so, and that the COVID-19 does mandate that we shorten it. I apologize for that. So if you could wrap it up.
Okay. So you have my letter, so I'm just going to go over the few issues I have with the presentation. So on SEQA, the SEQA that was done in the county did bring up eight issues that were, had to be mitigated. And two of them, one was highway noise and one was the scenic highway. So I'm not bringing up traffic. The taxes that the city's collecting for landscape maintenance, there's no, we don't have any common area. So I've told the residents, this is not the applicant's problem. It's between the residents and the city. I'd like to know what condition number the communication lines under grounding is because the city council did waive that in February. I am not in agreement with a 13-foot sidewalk on Lake. I do want to see the landscaping, so I don't think all the neighbors are in agreement on that. If you're changing conditions to at city council, it needs to be noticed to the residents. And then, like I said, I'd refer you to my letter.
Thank you very much. John Petty?
Chairman, Commissioners John Petty, 262 Marmalade Lane, Hemet, California 92544. I have presented the commission with a letter and some exhibits. I think they speak for themselves. One thing, Mr. Chairman, I think it's important if the commission decides to take action tonight, if we can get clarification whether any permits are able to be issued during an appeal period. So maybe the city attorney can weigh in on that, but I didn't mean to be presumptuous, Mr. Chairman, but perhaps you might be interested in whether or not the city attorney might opine on that. But I just wanted to make my comments on the record, preserve the administrative record, and thank the commission for listening.
Is there anybody else here in this room would like to speak as a public comment on this matter? Seeing none, it'll open up a teleconference. Anybody online right now would like to speak? Anybody still there? Yeah. Okay. So seeing none, we can close the public hearing and have a discussion on this commission. This is a very complex one. There's been a lot, some more changes tonight. So if there, you know, we do come to a conclusion and there's going to be a motion, then there's going to be, have to be some discussion. And also, again, I think the last time the city attorney reminds us all that this is a site development review. So this commission is mandated to look at certain facts and not others. So although we wanted clarification last time in terms of some things that were brought up, and when we make changes, kind of hate to do it willy-nilly in the next five minutes before a motion, but I think, personally, I think that that was done for some of the more difficult challenges. So what do you guys think?
My biggest, still, my biggest concern is unfortunately, they didn't come to some agreement with lot 48. It's still kind of up in the air, and I'm not sure why it's such an important property to hold on to, considering the scenic highway, there's not much you can do to that property. But that's, again, that's the biggest disappointment, because all I see is just a gray, a little pink area as to lot 48. But it is going to cause issues later on if it's not resolved the proper way. And that's my biggest hunch. I do appreciate D.R. changing all the homes to single-story along the existing single-story homes. So they're definitely working on, working with the community. And we can't make everybody happy, but I do see the progress in what they've done. I do appreciate that. But my biggest thing right now is the lot 48. That's my biggest concern at this moment.
And that was, that was mine as well. And so that was why I, when I spoke to, in my discussion with H.P., that it really clarified to me kind of the reason we're in a situation where we're at. And you know, you can only control what you can control looking forward. And I think it's a pretty brilliant solution to a problem that doesn't have a whole lot of, you know, current, there may be, it sounds like one was tendered just this evening, so there may be a whole different solution. But based on my understanding of things and what I clarified earlier, I personally think that it's as good as you can get considering the circumstances, and it's not worth, it's certainly not worth holding up a development because of two individuals that aren't able, or two entities that don't have a currently eye-to-eye view of something. So D.R. Horton is going to do what they can control, and then the future development will do what they can control. And so to me, that illustrates also just kind of the creativity and the professionalism of our planning staff. And I can only empathize the challenge it is to manage the development community with very valid concerns that we have to address and what that we get to address. And it's neat to see that this commission has had an opportunity to kind of help balance some of those and bring together some better result, as a result of the public sharing process. And so I'm very happy to be part of this, and I'm very glad to be part of the city.
Well, thank you for those comments. And I too agree that the Highway 74 setback was my biggest stumbling block. And that's why I wrote H.P., or he wrote me, asking if there was something that, you know, he can clarify, and I'm glad he did that. And we had Stephanie copy just to make sure that we're doing everything along legal lines. And when he explained the breakdown, and again, I know the meandering sidewalk as opposed to a straight sidewalk, it's probably the biggest difference. And the dollar amount, I think that even though I was convinced too, Jacob, at first that if they don't do the lot 48, 25 feet now, it's not going to get done. But I think that's tied to the remaining lots. So I, now I really do feel like it will be. Maybe it's not going to be the meandering sidewalk, but I think it will be done properly. And so I was satisfied with that. And then the concessions that the builder made, the single-family homes that are adjacent to others, and I know the six foot above, it's going to be tough either way. And of course, if I was a homeowner there too, I would have concerns about that. A two-story would be very difficult. I'm in my backyard with my kids, and you're looking up at all these windows. And so having them concede to one stories, I thought that was, that was good. That was a good concession. And number one in my book, in terms of the concessions they made, the, as I said, the 75% of Highway 74, I did the math, it's very close, a good job on that. The cedar fence, vinyl fence, that's a tough one. I mean, to me, it was, I discounted it at first. It's like, no big deal, it's a straw dog, and you're going to build it up and then tear it down. But really, from D.R. Horton's perspective, there's some liability involved there. So they have to go on other people's property, they have to remove, you know, posts that are ostensibly in concrete, and there's some digging and things to be done around, who knows, playground equipment and dogs and all this other stuff. So it really brings a conundrum to a company like that, and I appreciate that they were able to do that. And then the last thing, and I didn't hear about it until I read the staff report, is that I, that I thought, and I was in building for a long time, as some of you know, in the construction in this particular, in single-family housing. And the Spanish style just, it just didn't fit. I mean, as much as architecture can be an ongoing thing, but I mean, any architect would say Spanish is not craftsman, and even after 20 years. So I think going from the Spanish to the bungalow was a really good concession, and I think it works for the community. And I know that probably everybody over there, most everybody, would want single-family homes, and I just don't think that's viable anymore in terms of the profitability of the builder and for what people want. So I agree with the applicant on that note. So I think if they're antipathy, I don't want to exclude, I remember last night, yeah, over there.
So I think the biggest thing, I mean, we're talking about homes that are going to be built 20 years apart. Think about what we wore 20 years ago, what we drove, what our, you know, what hairdos we had 20 years ago. Yeah, you had hair. I was in middle school, I was in middle school, if that makes you feel old. I mean, there's going to be differences. The, you know, building materials have changed, costs have changed, what people want has changed. The community, the existing community is a great community. I have friends that live in there, I have clients that live in there, I've sold homes in there, I've helped clients buy homes in there. I'm very familiar with it. It's highly desired. This, this being built is not going to change that. People are still going to want those homes, just like Ayakona homes, or just like McM Warren homes, they know they're John Petty homes. So they want their desire. This, finishing this out, I don't think it's going to do anything other than those will be the original ones, and they will probably pull a little bit more of a premium because they're going to be those original homes. I think it's an amazing thing for our community that they're going to have this finished, to just not have that dirt, to not have it, to have beautiful new homes to look at. And I'm just, I'm excited for more housing options. Right now, I mean, there's 20, 30, 40, 100 buyers for every one home right now. The inventory is super limited. Obviously, even if we approve it tonight, it's still a ways out before, you know, year, I'm sure, a year plus before people actually be moving in. But to have that, you know, new build in our city, which we haven't had, San Jacinto's been growing like crazy, and D.R. Horton's been part of that, Express Homes has been part of that. So it's great to see it happening here. And I think if they're willing to make these changes that are going to better jive with the existing, you know, community, that it will be worth it. It's never going to look the same. They're not going to build John Petty homes. It's just never going to, even if, and even if they did, build the exact same homes he did, they're going to look 20 years newer. So it's never going to be completely compatible. Having materials and stuff that match up with what's existing obviously is more ideal. And I agree with you on the Spanish versus the bungalow. These were more of that style. So I, you know, I'm excited for it, and I think D.R. Horton's, for them to even take the time to do this and not just say, we're going to get approval one way or the other because we're a big company, they're not trying to muscle them, they're trying to work with them. So, because it is a small development, and they're, in their grand scheme of life, this is a pretty small project for them. So.
Thank you for those comments. It's really good. And that brings up a point that I thought that for the homeowners and for the community at large, that's what, that's what we're tasked to do. And the benefit to having houses in, on that lot instead of homeless people and squirrels, to me, makes up for it. Any other comments?
I have one about the current existing project with lot 48. When the phases were there, when they back in early 2000 when they were building, was that scenic highway supposed to be finished before certain phases were supposed to be done, just like they're treating it now, where they want the scenic highway to be started on or completion before the phases are over? Did John Petty's project have to finish the scenic highway and that whole condition back then and just never got done?
Well, generally, on a development, you would have one developer that would come in and install all the improvements surrounding the project. And then they'll start building the homes. That's how generally it gets developed. Unfortunately, this project had a time span, multiple developers involved now, and maybe more developers involved in the future. So when you, when you start dividing up the project into multiple phases, multiple years, you're going to run into more hiccups along the road. But generally, when a project comes in, it's one developer, one builder, and they'll build everything out for the perimeter improvements, all the infrastructures, and then they'll start building your homes.
So after tonight, if we were to approve yes, and that still leaves 48 kind of in a gray area?
No. As, as it was expressed earlier, D.R. Horton will build their portion, which is 75% of all the construction that is required for the, for the improvement along Florida Avenue. And so rather than leave the 25% of the portion for hardscape and softscape, and that developer or builder in the future would have to go back to Caltrans, go through the process all over again for that 25%, we're asking D.R. Horton to take that and do all the hardscape, get it all out of the way, and after that, the next builder, next builder would have to deal with Caltrans, and they'll just have to improve the softscape. So it makes it easier for the next builder to go through the process.
And before I hear a motion, I think that we might need clarification. So with that, I'm not sure, maybe we need to pull some stuff on the screen, and Stephanie, maybe you could help us go through what the motion would be, because there's some points that we have to keep in mind, and those are a few in number. Mainly, my recollection would be whether changing, you know, all hardscape or having the split lot on, on Lake Street that would facilitate having to go back to the council, that would be one. What was that, 14 and 41 or? Anyways, help me go through this, or help this commission go through this so that we form this correctly.
And in addition, the vinyl fencing.
Right. That was the thing that Mr. Boyd had talked about, that if the homeowners were amenable, if they wanted that on the three lots in question, and I know it's a public record, but do we do that by reference to the public record? Do we, do we have to verbalize that?
Sure. So what we have currently is that D.R. Horton is proposing to meet the standards and the conditions as it was approved for tract 31620. So that means they'll still install the landscaping along Lake Street, and they'll build a parkway adjacent to curb and then sidewalk as, as part of their development. And, oh, go ahead. And that they will agree to replacing the fencing around the three original model homes, including the interior fencing for the three lots.
H.P., I just wanted to clarify. My understanding was that in terms of the opinions or options that were on the presentation, that although that had come up in discussion, that we were staying with what was originally conditioned of the tentative map.
Right. So nothing has to happen.
Nothing has to happen with that. So just to clarify, I do have two additional conditions. So replacing that cedar fencing with the liability waiver, if they receive the liability waiver, and to install the entire scenic highway if they manage to acquire title. So I only have two. However, I did want to point out, and H.P., please feel free to step in, regardless, even if D.R. Horton did acquire from that separate developer, they would still be the developer that's responsible for that 25%. It would just happen sooner. So although, you know, it wouldn't hurt to have the condition of approval added, if that's what the commission would like to do, either way, whatever developer is going to develop those last lots would be responsible for that portion.
I just think more importantly with maybe the vinyl fencing on what John had brought up, so, yeah. The other, you're right, you wouldn't have to make it a condition if they owned those last lots, it would be done.
Yes, coming with the territory, exactly. So just for clarification, so my proposal would actually just be for the replacement of the cedar fencing. However, you know, you do have the option of adding that, especially since the applicant did agree to that condition. That second condition of installing the entire scenic highway based off of a clear purchase and title, if they were to receive that, that would be the only basis.
So whoever made the movement could, could reference that?
Could reference, I do need the commission to kind of clarify if you are going to add two extra conditions or just one. So the extra condition we are adding for sure is that cedar fencing, the replacement of the cedar fencing subject to a liability waiver.
Okay.
And then if the commission would like, we can talk about wording for a condition, installing the entire scenic highway subject to acquiring those last lots.
All right. Well, having heard that, anything else? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion on this. Anybody?
I don't think we need to tackle the other, the scenic highway. Do you?
Whoever does the motion.
My only, my only thought on that is that, is that it would get done with the first occupancy of the third phase of the 80 lots, and not then have to wait for the 27 lots to be developed afterwards. So they're just, after the first two phases get constructed.
This discussion fall within our purview?
Yes.
Okay.
I specified it as a, as part of the motion, and we're just making sure for the, for the, about it, that we're going to get those done. Whole thing's going to be completed prior to the start of the third phase of the 80 lots. So I would, I would, I will try to-
Go for it. I'll try to help.
Chairman?
Yes.
I believe it was not the third phase, but rather the last phase.
I move that the planning commission adopt the planning commission resolution bill number 2020-013 approving SDR 20-004 subject to the conditions of approval, including the condition that the developer will construct with a waiver from the residents, the vinyl fencing in between the three existing lots for the side return, and that if a agreement is made between the two developers for purchase of lot 48, that the current condition for completion of the hardscape prior to occupancy of the last phase will also include the softscape.
So just to clarify, it's the subject to acquiring the ownership of the remaining 27 lots, including lot 48 along Florida Avenue, scenic highway setback.
Thank you. Next, H.P.
Yeah. I will second the motion.
Commissioner Beers, sir? Commissioner Liverson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wood?
Aye.
Chairman Overmeyer?
Aye.
That is approved. Thank you for all your hard work. And all the homeowners, thank you everyone for coming to this. It was well fought, and I think we came to a good conclusion. So thank you, guys. And if we can get Ms. Ann Arsdale back. Okay. Number seven is department reports. H.P.?
This is for city attorneys. Do you have anything to?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Okay. Thank you. And the, with the H.P. community development reports.
Just to report that on June 23rd, there was a city budget that was on the docket, and they couldn't complete it on that night, so they extended it to the next day, which is the 24th at 3:00 P.M. And after, I believe it was two and a half hours to three hours, they came to a conclusion, and she has an adopted budget now. Just to report that on June 23, there was a city budget that was on the docket, and they couldn't complete it on that night, so they extended to the next day, which is the 24th at 3:00 P.M. And after, I believe it was two and a half hours to three hours, they came to a conclusion, and she has an adopted budget now.
And then seven C are Planning Commissioner Reports.
Commissioner Beemstuffer?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Leverton?
Uh, nothing to report this time.
Commissioner Van Arsdale? Vice Chair Ward? Thank you. Chairman Overmeyer?
I have nothing as well, I did, good job, you guys. Okay, if there's nothing else, we will be adjourned until July 21st.
I'm sure there's future agenda items.
Oh, sorry, did I skip one? What happened there?
You're going to get the hang of it.
Probably not, you're going to be chairman next, you got some. All right, let's back up to seven D. Thanks, H.P.
Sure. As you were, we were trying to get this commissioner's workshop on the docket for a long time. Now we have a full commission, we'll try to get that to you as quickly as possible, giving you a little more of information and just retooling of what's been happening within the Planning Commission, which they.
Okay. Thank you all, and now we'll adjourn the meeting.